Okay, good morning. I'd like to welcome everyone to the Atchison County Commission Meeting for Tuesday, January twenty eighth. I'd like to call the meeting to order. And our county clerk will do real.
Casey Quinn.
Present.
James Campbell.
Present.
Eric Knoll.
Here.
Do you please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? Followed by the invocation by Mr. Cormode.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic which stands on its nation under God, in its peaceful, with liberty and justice for all.
Remain standing for invocation.
Two verses in the twentieth Psalm I pray speaks to you today and where things are. Psalm. Verse seven of Psalm twenty, verse seven, some trust in chariots and some in horses. But we trust in the name of the Lord our God. They collapse and fall, but we rise and stand upright. Oh, Lord, save the king. Just stay focused on trusting in the Lord above everything. Let's pray. Father, I pray for the commissioners today as they meet and as they're discussing the affairs of the accounting. That you will guide them. Continue to bless them as your ministers, as your servants, to take care of these matters for you here in this place and this time. I pray, Father, that they will securely place their trust in you. And let you be the leader and the guide of all that we do. So that good is produced. That the wrong is rebuked. And praises rise because good is being done. In Jesus' name I pray, amen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next is public comment. Being none. Approval of agenda. Do I have a motion to approve this week's agenda? Moved in second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes three to zero. Consent agenda, we have the commission meeting minutes for. So Tuesday, January twenty first was the first set. Do I have a motion to approve the meeting minutes from Tuesday, January twenty first? Moved in second, and all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes three to zero. I also have the minutes from our Monday, December thirtieth, twenty twenty four. Special meeting. Do I have a motion to approve those as written?
What was the date?
December thirtieth.
Okay, I'll make a motion then.
Okay, and I will second, it's been moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes two to zero with Commissioner Campbell abstaining. All right, next is our Finance Director Review. Finance Directors joining us via Zoom this morning, welcome Mark.
Morning, thank you. So we do have payroll on this Friday for January thirty first. The total is one hundred ninety nine thousand, one hundred and thirty three dollars and fifty cents for the total payroll, the total net deposits. Out of this accounts payable run dated for tomorrow, January twenty ninth, the credit cards is four thousand eight hundred forty dollars and forty one cents. They had Roden Bridge Dispatch, Joint Communications, and EMS. Was the invoices that were being paid this time for those statements. I didn't see anything out of the ordinary, still working on descriptions with different departments, so. Some are, some are good, but I think there's still room for improvement. And then the total expense run, which is a little higher this week, is five hundred and thirty six thousand, eight hundred and fourteen dollars and fifty four cents. So. A good chunk of that, almost three hundred and seventy four thousand was the K Camp Insurance Premium. We had the K Work, which is our workers' compensation premium, all for twenty twenty five. And then about five thousand for KAC dues. So between those three items. It's a pretty big ticket bill, just because, you know, you pay it at the. First of the year in January, but that covers you all year, so it's not like you're making payments periodically through the year, it's just one lump sum and that pays for your coverage. And like some insurance, we had this question last year, and I wanted to refer to bring it up this year, we don't pay in six month installments, kind of like. You could do for personal insurance, like personal vehicle insurance or your mortgage insurance or something like that. We just pay for the annual twelve month. So. That's why it's a larger number. Our distribution did occur, so we do have funds in the general fund now, as well as the other funds. So we are not negative, it's a very healthy balance. It's more than I thought that we would get. I thought our bigger distribution would happen in June, but it looks like. There's a pretty good chunk in January, so we should not have an issue the rest of the year. I think the next. The next distribution that will be another large chunks in June, but then October will really be where we need to monitor to see where we're at cash wise, but. We're gonna do some. Investigating before we get up to that point and just make sure we're sitting good, like what we discussed in previous meetings. But as of right now, we're at a healthy spot. I received an email that had a document in it from the President of the United States. This email had came, it was a handoff from the City Manager of Atchison. And so I think this is just more of a letting you guys know and the citizens know that Atchison County did its due diligence with the ARPA federal funding. It was an executive order that President Trump had signed, saying that they were pausing all federal dollars. I'm not for sure if it would trickle down to the local government. In the letter, it talks about federal agencies first, that any federal agency that had federal money, the spending would be paused. So knowing that our federal dollars of ARPA money was already taken care of and completed. This will not impact Atchison County at all. It could the city, if the city did not. Expense their ARPA money, but as far as the entity of the county is concerned, we are okay.
Can you send that? Can you send that letter to me?
Sure, I can, yeah.
I'd just like to see it, thank you.
And it was just signed yesterday. Oz happens today at five o'clock PM. So just wanted to let you know that we, with the help of the Lloyd Group and us pushing through to spend the money down. Without having. An obligated contract that we had to sit on the money for, I think we're gonna be in good shape and we did what we needed to do.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's very good.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mark. Next was an update on the Chamber of Commerce Annual Dinner. I heard back from H R I T Finance Treasure Clerk in Roden Bridge. They cannot make it, the clerk is gonna be at another table. Commissioner Campbell, I think with that being said, you might want to just purchase tickets. And same with me, if I'm able to make it, I'll just purchase tickets individually and then we'll just be at tables within the community. Because I don't think we'll have enough to fill a county table, so just an update on that. All right, and I printed that L and O. Thank you. Next on the list, we were sent the L and L invoice for request for payment, and this was for the Atchison Sports Complex. We've been paying this out in portions as they complete the project. And this invoice is for thirty five thousand, did you guys have a chance to review that?
I don't saw it.
Okay, so I would look for a motion to approve the thirty five thousand on L and L construction. And that is part of that four hundred thousand that'll be allocated for the projects at the Atchison Sports Complex. Have a motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, moved in second, and all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Passes. Three to zero. Need to just couple that, Mark, we do a purchase. Okay, next is Commissioner Comments, Commissioner Campbell.
I don't have any.
Commissioner Knoll.
I can't think of anything, thank you.
Okay. This is a couple of things, I guess we could either do them in notices or communications, but I haven't pulled up, so I just want to let everyone know. The Atchison Community Foundation is having an informational session on Wednesday. The January twenty ninth is seven PM at the Atchison Cultural Center. Let me pull up the flyer here. And so it's gonna talk about what is the community foundation interested in supporting Atchison nonprofits? Join our panel discussion, what is a community foundation? It's an evening of discussing charitable giving, local nonprofits, and critical community issues. They will have that Wednesday, January twenty ninth. At seven PM at the Atchison Cultural Center for the Arts at one eleven North Eighth Street.
One eleven North Eighth.
Yep. And that's at. In Atchison at seven o'clock.
So how do we know who's been invited to that? Because. Is that for like area agency on age?
I think it's for everyone, like any.
But have they been, I mean, are they aware, that's what I don't know what.
I saw it on social media and I just wanted to make sure that we're aware, because I know that was, you know, a lot of the funding was cut and so.
Been on Facebook, would you say so?
And it's Wednesday, what date?
Uh, January twenty ninth, so this.
Tomorrow night.
Yep.
Okay, so I, the organizations that I'm familiar with.
You might.
Yeah.
Yep, that would be great.
That's, I was just kind of curious.
Let me save this flyer and I'll email it to you guys so that you can blast it out easily if. If you want to share that with people.
Because, you know, we've been asking everyone from the fair and everyone to get involved with this, so I think. When we see information like this, I think it's good to. To let them know, to encourage them to participate, or at least inform themselves.
Yep, okay, so you should have that flyer now. And then also, there was another one, hold on. Okay, so this week is, okay, so then Saturday, February first at eight AM, they're having a legislative coffee. And that'll be at the Atchison Depot at two hundred South Tenth Street. And that's in Atchison. And that will have Dr. Alan Rivas, which is our Kansas State Representative for the sixty third district, as well as the Kansas Senator Craig Bowser. So they'll be there and their discussion points are expectations and goals for the twenty twenty five session, property tax update. And committee activities and issues, so.
What time?
That will be at eight AM on Saturday. Yep, and I can send you that one too. So I just wanted to highlight those. People might find those interesting. Okay, there is no presentation of petitions or proclamations this week. Unfinished business we took care of, department head updates, we have Holly Hackathorne, the County Appraiser, is here with a. Purchase order approval for mail C V N and a newspaper publication. Want that?
Well, I went around to three different companies for our valuation notices. And. I was looking back in previous years to kind of see what we had been paying as well. And here's the three estimates that I have received. I think CopyCo is the one that I'm gonna go ahead and go with, it's a one that we haven't ever went with in the past, but they're based out of Salina. And they give us the best rate, really, even with the postage increases. It has only fifty four hundred dollars, so. Last year we went with postalocity and it was a little over seven thousand dollars after it was all set. So when I seen that number, I was very pleased.
Yeah, absolutely.
That's quite a bit of difference.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And that's for them printed, double sided, trifolded with the envelopes, with the postage, all of them. That's, that is really great.
Yeah.
Okay, and we're sending out nine thousand four hundred and thirty one of them.
Nine thousand four hundred and thirty one. Could be a little bit less, kind of just, I mean, that's just a rough estimate, as far as, you know, if we had other parcels that went from, you know, commercial to exempt or whatever, so.
Okay, perfect. Excuse me, I would like for a motion to approve the purchase order to CopyCo in the amount of five thousand four hundred sixty dollars and six cents. As presented by our Atchison County Appraiser.
So move.
Moved in seconded, this will come out of the office supplies and printing line item, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes three to zero. And that was for the twenty twenty five change of value real estate notices.
And the other item, I went ahead and just made a copy for each one of you. This is the publication that I just placed. It's an annual publication that's, you know, the state requires us to make at least ten days prior to the mailing of C V Ns, but, you know. It's better just to get it done and over with now before, you know, if there's any complications with the newspaper. To get it just. In the paper. So this is just basically informing everyone about the. You know, what we're seeing in the market still. Countywide, I mean, it possibly could be another ten percent depending on where. Where you're at, but some areas may only see a four percent. But the sales that we've had come in are still, there's still even some even more than market. And that's, it's really affecting us.
May we also put this on our social media page?
I do have, it's on our website.
Okay.
This, because I have to submit this to the state as well.
Okay, great.
Just proof that we do have it out on the website as well.
Okay, are you okay if we ask them to share it on the social media page?
Go for it.
I just think the more like.
The more posted.
Yeah, ahead of time, right?
Yes.
Like, this is the. The future of what we're predicting.
Correct. Yeah, yeah.
And Holly, you're talking about like valuations, right?
Yes.
Okay, so then the board. With that information, that's, that's gonna be tied to our budget, so the more valuations go up, the lower the R and R rate goes down. So if we want to keep, just keeping that in mind, if we want to keep the, even the same mill levy. It's still gonna be an increase because your R and R rate's going down, so it takes more to make that up. So just keeping that in mind.
Thank you, Mark.
Are you aware of some of the discussions that they're having at the state level and about freezing the valuation?
Caps on.
Caps on base, do you, or how would that work? Do you know, I mean, I don't want to put you on the spot, but I mean, it's just as we start talking about the budget process and things and the stuff, the topics that are coming up. I just can't imagine how you start freezing things. So does that put you out of a job, I mean, why reevaluate if you're not gonna use any figures? You know, but if you see where my thoughts are going, and I don't mean, that's not a wish, that's just.
Right.
You know, you kind of wonder the thought process or if you're, if they're involve your office any, I mean statewide.
Yeah, so what they would do is they would use the current year and then put a cap on whatever percentage that they say, you know, if it's a three percent. They would just take previous year and then. Do like a three percent, basically, like an index, like this is, this is as far as you can go.
You can go.
Right.
But do they keep statistically. Watching what the market's doing with the actual real value, so it would just drop off?
So then if they were to ever stop that cap. Then we would have to go back and determine what the market's doing. Which, I mean, we would still, we would still have to go out on our sales and our, our. Our performance would not change, we would still have to conduct all of our analysis and everything. It's just, if that cap falls off. They're gonna see that big chunk of increase of wherever the market's at.
Well, then, you know, I hear bits and pieces, so I'm trying to meld what I get, and so, I mean, it's. A huge thing that the legislature is gonna be dealing with, so. If someone, if a house sold, then would they be subject to the previous cap, or would they then have to, would that start like a new?
That I'm not aware of.
Yeah, I mean, these are just, I.
Right.
I'm thinking out loud, so we can kind of know the process of where some of this could be headed. I mean, like I said, I don't want to put you on the spot.
That's probably good questions with that legislative coffee, to hear what, what they're saying.
So Holly, this is an annual.
It's an annual publication, yes.
This is basically saying that values are still increasing.
So I start my analysis in, in July for the next tax year. I start with land, going to depreciation, going to, you know, well, within depreciation, you've got residential, commercial, manufactured home. Then we have to, you know, look at our, what our market's doing, you know, we got our land sales, which our land sales have, for our vacant land sales, they have increased. And that's, that's gonna, I mean, even if they're, you know. And what a particular part of the city, if they see a decrease on their residential dwelling, but their land increase, I mean, it may even out or.
I just have a quick question on, because what we saw last year. Was large amounts of property that historically had been taxable. Fell off and became exempt, so that really affects our revenues. And we were kind of scrambling there at the end, seeing like more and more tax dollars not being collected. And then we are signing off on these taxural correction sheets, so just understanding that, because all these decrease.
Right.
Do you have any advice for us as commission on a good way to stay kind of in tune with that? Because, so when we show up every week, right, and it's kind of, we sign them and we move on.
Right.
But should we be keeping some type of, or requesting from you some type of report quarterly or anything that we don't? Have that situation again, or if we hear of anything on the radar that might be changing in the community, making sure that we're having that discussion with you of what that impact could be?
Right.
Because I just, last, last year, I mean, that was a lot.
It was huge.
To bear.
Right.
No one saw it coming.
So when I, when I first came aboard that there was affordable housing downtown, the eight, eight three two property, there's. So that, that one. When, when it was previously picked up, it was picked up as a commercial building. It's the, the previous county appraiser was not aware that it was gonna be under affordable housing, because that changes things. So that spreadsheet that I had given. It might have even been. August after I started. Kind of did a little breakout of, because that, that one did affect things, because that, since they had already paid, it was a payment out of protest. So since they already paid half their tax, we had to do the refund on that one.
Okay.
And that was a major, I mean, it was like eight million appraised and went down to like one point seven million.
Okay, so the ones, because the taxes are in arrears, the ones we're signing now, that'll decrease will be in the. Future projections.
Boda, so what I'm, what I'm planning on doing is I'm gonna start running queries quarterly. And then that way I can provide you with like what pending exemptions that we have going forth to Boda. Because I don't think that's ever been anything in the past that has been presented.
And I'm wondering, do we need to have like a percentage of that in our budget, right, like of, there's a good chance we're not gonna have this collection so that we don't end up.
Some of them we don't know, because then it's, it's like if the college goes out and purchases houses, demolishes them and then applies to get that exempt. We lost that building value, but now we're losing that land value also, it's all gonna be exempt, and they can exempt up to two years to current plus two years.
I have further back before two appraisers for you, I know that there was a presentation because of. A large grain handling facility was asking for a reduction and that was before later, and we were informed about that. And I don't think that, it must have happened, it depends too on the time of year, because of some of these last year that happened mid-year, it really, the budget was cooked. Everything was done, but then you changed the value after the budget had already been passed, so that's really almost doubly affects us. I mean, it would affect next year anyway, but in that case, I think that it, when they did get a reduction, but it happened like in January, well. Then that came to light when we were plugging in our figures, we're already plugged, that, those new values are already plugged in while we were doing the budget process, not after.
Do those folks, like, do we get bypassed though when they go to the Board of Tax Appeal? And so, because like to your point, the Board of Tax Appeal grants it, that's out of our control. And, and here's, here's your letter saying this has been granted, right? Like that's.
So if it's, so like. Bungie was actually one of them that was gonna take me onto Boda this last year.
Okay.
And, but the attorney for, no longer works for them and they went ahead, they backed out, they dismissed it. I mean, the state requires us to value by the grain elevator guide.
Yeah.
So, I mean, it's based on their license capacity and that's what they wanted to argue was, you know, the fact that they'll never meet the license capacity because of OSHA standards and. But, you know, like I explained to them, if you go back and reevaluate with what you're reporting to the state for your license capacity. And decrease it until you meet par and then go back and, but I guess it's too much of, and their argument was because it was too much. Of a process to get it back, like once, once you get licensed, you're licensed and you don't want to ever adjust it because it's, it's hard to get back up. Like get your license capacity back up, but I mean, as far as state requirements, that's how we base our values. But they, they ended up canceling that one, so I didn't have to go on to that one. As far as like the, then like the previous change orders that we've done. I want to go back to that, because I went ahead and I've, I've got. Reports ran for, you know, twenty two, twenty three, and twenty four, and I'm in the process of putting those into a spreadsheet. And so then that way, you know. How much value has been affected due to disaster relief? How much value has been affected due to disaster relief, to BOTA exemptions, to payment on a protest, land banks. Land bank exemptions, um, or, you know, even added tax, because we do process change orders as well to. Um, if it's something we discover, we'll add it to the tax rule, so then that's more revenue that will come come in, but. Um, so I'm in the process of breaking these reports down and then that way we can go ahead and. And that's something that I want to, I'm gonna start sending quarterly as well. That way it kind of gives you guys an update. You know, what change orders that we've processed and you can sort it to, you know, see what BOTA ones that we've had and.
Is there a way to um run a report on Atchison County to see the valuation totals based on commercial property, agriculture property? Residential property?
And exempt and vacant, like the different classifications?
Yeah. Um. As far as like the totals, right? Because um, I think that would be interesting. And some of the discussions as commissioners, you know, come at us from several directions and just knowing the value. Of what the property tax being paid on ag land, um, I think would be very, very interesting in conjunction with all the other.
Yeah.
You know, folks paying, paying the property tax.
To that point, so so we, we sit in on the Atchison City Economic Development Group. This information would be good for us and for everybody, for that matter, the information you're talking about. But I have often wondered, you know, what, what, what gets us to where we are, our our tax rate in Atchison? And those things you mentioned all do that. So the exempt properties in Atchison, a lot of other factors go into it. But it would be nice to know those numbers so that we can say, okay, this is, this is where we are, why we are. Um, and why we have to go back to the homeowners, property owners, business owners that are not exempt to ask for more money.
Right.
You know?
And that's, and that's what's tough because, you know, you come from a county that has, or you come to a county that has more. Exempt properties than you do taxable properties, because I'll, I'll even put in a pie chart to show you because I mean, you'll, you'll be able to.
Yes, that would be incredible.
You'll be able to see, you know, you have like three quarters of it is exempt properties, because I mean, you've got schools, you've got college, you've got um hospitals. Um, churches, yes. So there, there's more exempt value in this county than there is taxable value.
Really? I didn't think it would be that much.
Yeah, that would be awesome. I'll do that for him.
Uh, back to the. The exemptions that come up late in the year, so the quarterly reports will help us see those coming. But when it's budget time and you're in the last quarter, um, is there, is there any notion? That this affects counties the way it does, at the state level, at any level, because the process starts. Does the process start with you and then go to the state? Is that how?
Yes.
If somebody is exempting, so you know early on, but what are you allowed to share? Because. It's not, it's not approved till it comes back. So you're just the beginning stages. Is there any part of that process, you know, I guess, I, I'm not gonna answer for you, but you don't know. For sure until it comes back.
Exactly. Yeah, I don't, I, I don't know what they're gonna think. Yeah.
Okay.
And what's affecting all the whole state right now, though, is they're so short-staffed-handed up at BOTA. They're two years behind on granting exemptions right now to even review exemptions. And so individuals that have already paid that tax. They can go back and to the time that they applied or even prior to and grant that exemption, so then they have to refund that money.
Hmm, yeah. Uh, so what, what is the deadline to file for that?
They can apply anytime.
But right up to what?
Anytime.
Well, okay.
Because if even if they, even if they purchased a property like in um twenty twenty-three. And they're just, they're like, oh, I can apply to BOTA, I can get this exempt. They can put on their application. Twenty twenty-three is the date I purchased it and BOTA can go, even though it's twenty twenty-five, BOTA can go back to twenty-three and say, oh, you're exempt now.
And so then they have to pay that back. How does the payout for that? Do you under, do you under, I mean, once it's approved? Is the payout immediate or is it, or is there a? Some kind of consideration to the, to the county or whoever's paying back that amount? You see what I'm saying? Uh, it, because this is where we get stuck. If somebody says, you owe me a million bucks, then how do, how does that get paid back? Is it? All at once, you, you know, right at, right?
So if BOTA, if BOTA then comes back and denies something, um, then they have forty-five days to pay it.
And if they approve it. On that side, but the, but the refund.
On the refund part, I don't know like what our deadline is to refund that money. Okay.
Well, because the county, any public entity is supposed to run their budget. Pretty lean, I mean, that's the idea, right? You run it lean. So then these type of situations. Is what causes problems because they come in last minute and then. So I, I, maybe that's something to talk about with the.
Yeah.
With our representatives to try to figure out a way to get their money to them. You don't want to keep it. But, you know, hopefully County or the city or whoever it is, help that entity.
So then, I mean, if they, if they apply to BOTA and then they don't pay their taxes. Um, I mean, they still fall delinquent. Um, but then I provide a list to the treasurer of people who, individuals that have not paid, but they're pending. So then, you know, that way we kind of know.
Mm hmm.
Um, and then that's money that hadn't been collected yet. So there's no refund, but I mean, it's still something that had been budgeted for.
And also when we find out what those are, or the ones in the pipeline, it's probably a good idea. For the clerk to be part of that discussion, because all passing entities within that area are going to see the same thing we're seeing as far as a.
So when BOTA makes their decision, they will, they they'll mail it to me, the clerk and to the treasurer.
Okay.
Um, and then I know when I do like my individual reports, I always give um, at that time, a list of um pending. Exemptions um within my certification to the clerk. So you you'll get that, but I want to try to do this on a quarterly basis instead of an annual and then that way.
Yeah.
Every once more in the loop and we're not seeing a lot of these surprises because I'm.
Okay, yeah, I'm looking forward to those charts and what you're gonna put together because I think that'll be real interesting.
See, it really affected us last year because our cash was so low because we didn't collect as much as we should. We were in a thin budget, but we were short of cash. And these types of situations are what feed into that. And where it hadn't been a problem before, uh, that's not where our focus has been, but I think it'd be help us to be more aware. Why haven't we collected this?
And yeah, I think that's my thing too of like, hey, we get our projections or the info of what we think, right? We were projecting the revenues to go up, so as Mark said, then the R and R and the mill levy to go down. But then as we're signing reductions, right? Like, I just want to make sure because. Yeah, the end of this year was a little bit stressful, but no, I appreciate the information. It's gonna be very helpful.
Thank you. I've got one little quick question.
Yeah.
And that is, in the past, as a taxpayer, I would always get. The form at the end of the year to sign, it was the big long green form and it had all my trucks and everything on. So this year I knew I had seen something a while back saying that it wasn't going to be required.
Yes.
So I've had some people ask, it's like, what's going on and how, if I've got a change?
Mm hmm.
How to address that, so.
So I, 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 and that's, I tried before we did our mailing, because legislation had changed it to where. Uh, and a lot of counties aren't even mailing them anymore. Um, but there are still some counties that are mailing, um, we are still mailing, but we're only going to mail to the individuals that need to sign. Once we have a signature on file legislator, they they changed it to where we no longer have to mail out the forms as long as they've. Uh, notified us. And so once we get that signature indicating that, you know, you still own your personal property. Um, we're not going to continue mailing them to you, but if you have changes, like you sell something or purchase something new. Then it's still your responsibility to report to us that, that you've acquired or sold something. Um, and which, I mean, I I hope that people will come in and and say that they had sold something because some items are curatable, so. Um, that way they're, they don't have to pay the, all that tax. But um, so. We, we mailed out, we, we cut our mailing in half this year for personal property. Um, so. We only mailed out, you know, ha- half to half of the taxpayers and there's, those are the only ones that have not, we don't have a signature on file. And we're trying to get it out there because then you have to pay penalties and we don't want everybody stuck with all these penalties. Granted, legislation also reduced those penalties. So instead of a fifty percent penalty for not filing, it's now twelve and a half percent. Um, so I mean, I guess we may see like a reduction in, you know, penalties that we've collected. Um, but. Um.
Yeah, I was just curious what, because I had a couple people say, oh, I didn't get that read.
Mm hmm.
So.
That's probably a good thing. That means you don't have penalties.
In other words, if they've got a change, just come directly to your office and just report it there.
Yep, and I put a sign on our door, if you've purchased or sold anything, come in and see us.
Thank you so much.
Very welcome.
Paying notices in communications, none, introduction and consideration of resolutions. Um, and then we have about fifteen minutes until um the executive session. Um, I plan to qualify that um to ensure um. Now that we're in a meeting together, since I was asked to have the meeting. Um, and I felt the need to bring the meeting to the Board of County Commission, I just want to qualify that it meets the um non-elected personnel. Uh, standard, so I will go do that and then, um, if it doesn't, we'll have a, we'll have a meeting, we'll just have a visit, so. And if it does, we will stay business as usual, um, probably with less than that timeframe allowed. So I originally did an hour, but I don't think we need that. Um. A few unfinished business items for next week, just based on the emails that we got. Um, do we want to request that Brian comes and gives us an update on the historical society?
Has anybody asked?
This morning, he was so busy, I didn't want to bug him about it, but I want to talk to you guys and I think if we add him to the. Agenda next week and he can be prepared to talk about it, if you guys are good with that.
Yes, I I did take, talk to him, but I don't have specifics, so I'm not gonna.
Okay.
Yeah, I'd rather go with what he.
Okay, so we'll, we'll request him to give us an update on that. Um. What other things we? We did. And then we could have time um to, are you guys gonna be prepared if we could um? Talk and go ahead and vote on the weather language next week? That Jody had sent us some.
Five minutes, we can do it now, because I'm, I've looked at all of them. Have you looked, had a chance to look at them? Yeah, her, her. I mean, I've.
So, let's add it to the agenda. Are you good?
Okay.
That way we stay with, so we'll add that to the agenda next week and we'll vote on that. Um. Written reports, sports complex, we did that. Was he coming on the eighteenth, right? So we have time on that one.
Who?
Uh, I would, the sports complex.
Oh.
I still have some emails in here that we voted on today on that payment, but he's coming for the update on February eighteenth, I think. Okay, so we also, and then we can add the December EMS. Um, report. For next week too. Okay, I think that's all the emails that I have that we hadn't. Addressed on that. Had a constituent send me a copy of their receipt. And I was trying to remember, Pat, is Kansas Department of Revenue where you get the breakdown for the sales tax paid in Atchison County? Um, because they sent me. I'll forward this to you guys so you can see it, but they sent it to me because there's several taxes like outlined in in their receipt. And they thought it was interesting, and so I was gonna try to look it up to provide a. Um, explanation, but I haven't got that done yet. So I'll just share that with you and say I plan to respond. When I gather the info. And then I know Mark sent us an update on. What our budget for this year. I should probably keep a copy of that here. You have it? Oh, perfect. If you have it handy, that would be great, just to kind of get prepared. Because next week is the fourth, so Board of County. Review budget expectations. And he already communicated with the department head, so. Um, he sent us the final numbers for twenty twenty-four, uh, as well as what our budgets in twenty twenty-five are. So I think that's really good for us to look at and then maybe. Maybe next week when he's here, we can have maybe a workshop with just the finance director and kind of get our minds around. That schedule and how it'll go and.
And I also plan to have like a, like a preliminary. Here's what the budget numbers are for twenty twenty-five, if we use those same numbers for twenty twenty-six, what that kind of would look like too.
Perfect.
The budget for twenty-six, now it's not going to be a hundred percent spot on because, you know, for twenty-six, we won't know the mill levy yet, we won't know. The R and R rate yet, we won't know, um, if there's any taxes that haven't been collected. So all those things kind of go into setting the budget, but um, we can at least have an idea of, you know, between this percentage and this percentage, this is what the taxes would be, et cetera.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you, Mark.
Sure.
And is the tax sale? Do we want to add that update next week?
Well, we, we have a hearing on February fourteen.
Okay.
Is the next thing. We probably will set this, well, I shouldn't say that, assuming that uh, everything goes as anticipated, we'll set the date of the sale then. I suppose it's possible if there's, something's filed between now and then that needs an evidentiary hearing before the court can grant judgment, then. It might not be granted that day, but I anticipate it being granted that day. There's nothing's been filed like that.
Perfect.
Use a restroom.
Yeah, I am too. Oh, also. Pat, can we have you send us those updated sports complex reports?
Yes, I got those from Mark, but I haven't put them in this, my spreadsheet, yeah. You just want the.
Just, yeah, updated balances after, because we allocated a four hundred last year. And then you were gonna provide an update on the policy handbook.
Yeah, we have maybe a ten minute executives.
Um, we'll do it today, but we'll um. Wait until after next one.
Yeah, you guys know, come on up. That you guys can actually, um, the microphone's right here, so if you would want to sit here and then bring a couple chairs up, that works. You mean up there? Yeah, you, yep, you guys can come up here. So just um, welcome, the, the Amberwell team is here to visit with commissioners. Uh regarding our EMS department and um. County Councilor Patrick Henderson, Commissioner Campbell, Commissioner Knoll. Commissioner Quinn, County Clerk, Susan Carrigan, and HR Director, uh Jody Moore, so. Anyone wanna introduce, I have Amy and, thank you.
Um, so Amy Folsom, our Executive Director of Patient Care Services at the hospital. Uh, Alicia Sorensen, Chief Operating, Chief Nursing Officer.
And I'm Dr. Thelman, I'm the Director of the ER.
Nice, nice to meet you, sir.
So, um, we just wanted to have some follow-up, I know, uh Commissioner Quinn, you had brought Cory to the hospital. And we had had a meeting just about some ways that that we could help uh support EMS. Um, the document that I shared with you is just kind of a breakdown, uh one of the things had been requested. Was really taking a look at the non-emergent transfers that were happening, uh things that we were calling. Uh EMS to assist with that were outside of emergent transport. So that is a breakdown looking at um August through December, you can see uh the non-emergent transfers. How many of those were uh took place? Um, how many were done, uh the blue column is, was done by other ambulance services. Uh, the ones in green were the ones that were actually performed by Atchison County. And whether or not they took place on day shift or night shift, it was again, some of those questions of could these things be scheduled? In off times, allowing our EMS time to sleep and rest and and so forth, so. Just wanted to share with you kind of the data and the numbers. Uh, the one on the bottom is related specifically to our um emergent transfers. Transfers to higher level of care, these are patients that uh required admission, required specialty procedures. Expert consultation not available, um and you can see of those, um. The majority of them are happening outside of Atchison County EMS. Um, and also has the breakdown of the day shift versus the night shift, so. Just based on our previous conversation, I wanted to share that data with you. Um, some of the concerns that we are seeing at Amberwell, especially through the emergency department. Is just uh our ability to transfer those truly critical time-sensitive patients. These are patients that are experiencing um an acute MI, an acute stroke. That we were on a clock, um evidence-based uh treatments as we need to get them. To the nearest cath lab within that ninety-minute window for immediate intervention. Uh, we have certain things that we can do to help uh stop or or change the course of a stroke progression. And again, we have a narrow window of time to get those things to happen. And as you can see on that graph, a lot of those are having to happen outside of our own county EMS. We're having to bring in other players. So when we talk about some of those things that are contributing to the challenges. We used to have a Life Net, that the helicopter service that was based in Saint Joe. That has gone away, our closest helicopter service is based out of Lawrence right now. So when, and and their services are used by an entire region. So we may not always be the the number one priority, we can't always get them here quickly and efficiently. Exactly, um, a lot of our closest uh tertiary facilities that we would normally transfer to. Such as Mosaic, Saint Luke's, KU, um they are experiencing unusual volumes. And are have been unable to accept our patients on transport. Or on transfer, so that means when we're having to transfer to Topeka, to Research, to Overland Park. Uh, when those teams go out on transfer, they're gone for longer periods of time. And that's not anything that is within our control, it's entirely dependent on them being able to accept our patients. Um, that was a trend that started during COVID and we're not seeing that really change or decrease at all. One of the things that was brought up during our previous meeting with uh Commissioner Quinn and the EMS team. Was just that staff fatigue, um with them doing those twenty-four-hour shifts. And them sharing with us the increase to the number of calls that they are receiving. Um, they're not giving uh the team adequate downtime, they're not able to rest and sleep and recuperate. It hasn't been safe, there've been times when transfers have been declined. Um, purely because the team has not had a chance to sleep and they don't feel that it is safe for them to do that transport. We, it was shared with us that one of the paramedics is getting ready to retire. And um also been shared that potentially another paramedic is looking at leaving the organization as well. And when we're already limited, they they've asked us to at times alter. Uh, the care of a patient though, so that it would allow them to do the transfer with an EMTA. Instead of a paramedic, because there hasn't been a paramedic available. And we have significant concerns that with the loss of those two paramedics, they've been uh very clear that. There are numerous paramedic programs in the state of Kansas that have closed altogether, so fewer paramedics being trained and turned out. Um, a lot of the paramedics that are within the state and registered are not working in EMS systems. They're working in hospital-based systems, so it's, it's created a real recruiting and succession planning challenge. And that, of course, is is a concern for us on the the downside of that as well. Uh, some of the concerns that have been shared are just related to um. Equipment issues, uh not having the equipment in the right location to where it's readily accessible. When they arrive for transport, they don't have the equipment that they need or equipment is malfunctioning. Specifically IV pumps, ventilators.
Can you be more specific of when that occurred or where that occurred?
When that occurs, it's when they are arriving for transport. And the ventilator that they need is at a different station, so they don't have it on their rig. So we either have to provide one of our ventilators and convert a ventilator that was not meant for transport. For transport to go. Um, or we've had to share IV pumps and so forth to go on transport with them, that they then have to return to us later.
Because I know that we're very well. Equipped. So I guess if I'd be interested in a no specific, I'll just on that.
There's one case that it might have just been an isolated one, but it was a STEMI patient and unfortunately, we didn't meet our timeline. Because their pump was malfunctioning and had to stay longer and they had to troubleshoot and figure out what was going on. So then our essentially door to door, when the patient comes in, when the patient was discharged. Was delayed, which is a very. Large metric that our hospital and nationwide goes with as well, that was one case.
So you're thinking it's just one isolated malfunction.
That's just off the top of my head, that was just that one example that I could think of.
That he was particularly involved in, so what I can do uh for you, Commissioner Knoll, is start tracking that. And identifying the times that we are having to send our equipment with them. Or make alter- alternate um accommodations related to equipment, would that be helpful?
Yeah, uh, so is that directed directly at the county EMS? Or is this uh the you, people that other people that you call in to, uh is it, has it been? Some of their problems?
Not that I am aware of, this is specifically the, and again, to be fair, the the. Items that I had asked for in preparation for this meeting today were related only to Atchison County EMS. So I don't have any specific numbers to share with you, so I will work on pulling that together.
Thank you. I'm gonna save my questions for the end, I'm just listening.
Yeah, so um what we are striving to do is just, we, we absolutely value. Our relationship with Atchison County EMS, they have been longtime, very valuable partners with us. They come out and help us in ways that are above and beyond what would be expected. Um, when we have had some um significant uh facility and utility failures in the organization. Even without us calling for assistance, they've been there, been there to support us. And that, we want to do what we can to help support them. While also making sure that we are, have a backup plan for if a situation presents. Um, so concerns just on, i- is there a way that we can assist with um recruiting? Um, what, is there any, any ideas? I know we tried to share some ideas in that previous meeting, we shared some things that we've been doing. For those particularly difficult to recruit specialty areas as far as offering scholarships, offering. You know, sign-on bonuses, um alternative work schedules, just things like that. To try to um focus on recruiting within the hospital, so is it just sharing ideas, sharing knowledge? Um, we want to um reassure you that one of our goals as the healthcare entity. Is to continue to work and expand the services that we're able to provide. Um, to look at alternative ways that we can access some of that specialty consultation. Um, so that we can keep more of the patients here in the community. Our goal is to make sure that we are taking care of all the things that are within our scope to take care of. And how can we broaden that scope again, to minimize the impact on the community and having to transport patients outside? Knowing the burden it is on the patient, the family, and also our community resources. Um, but that's not something that's going to happen quickly, that's, that's like a three-to-five-year plan. And that is something that the new administration is very committed to doing and investigating. So we, we recognize our role as a healthcare partner with the community as well. Um, one of the things that has been asked, because it's, it's my understanding. That the potential retirement of one of the paramedics is fairly close, is, is po- potentially the end of this month.
Yeah, we can't talk about.
Sorry.
No, you're fine.
Um, but having those contingency plans, so um in a previous uh facility. Uh, where we were doing uh interventional cardiology, anytime that a patient had to be placed on a special type of a. Come of equipment called a intra-aortic balloon pump, a nurse was required to transport with that patient. And so if. If there is a potential that we may have to send a nurse on transport, should a paramedic not be available? And we need to meet those very time-specific things, we need to make sure that we have the processes, the protocols. The regulatory things addressed, so that when and if we have to pivot in that moment. I can assure the nursing staff that they are protected and they are covered for their services rendered during that transport. So just wanting to be a little bit proactive with that.
I'm curious, on these transfers, the blue numbers. Do you have a breakdown of those? Because, you know, I'm curious, how many of these are being sent out and what, what, for what reason are they being sent out?
So we have an extensive patient data on every transfer that happens within our organization. Those are numbers that we track every month, um we know exactly where they're going, why they're going, what is that specialty service? Um, whether it is for a trauma, whether it is stroke care, whether it's a acute MI that needs to go for cardiac care. Um, is it that we didn't have a surgeon on call, we didn't have an orthopedic surgeon on call? Or it's a surgical case that we don't do within our facility or some type of um specialist? If it's a dialysis patient, we don't have dialysis in this community, we don't have uh the nephrology specialty. So we have all of that extensive breakdown um that I can provide for you. If you're looking at something more on like a categorized area.
Well, right now, what I'm hearing is that the focus is on. The EMS side of it, so my question is, would these numbers? You know, wi- with the blue. Uh, numbers come down if, you know, depending on the caseload, you guys decide. What those were for what reason? And, and so, you know, I, I, I'm curious if the numbers would be closer if, if we knew exactly. What it was you were transferring for, it is, you know, is some of this because of hospital staffing, hospital decision-making? That is out of the hand of, of everybody else in this room, the EMS, you know, the. I understand you're making those decisions, but also you're saying that we can't, that the EMS is having trouble covering this. Well, are these numbers similar in all hospitals? Does the EMS in the next county, are they having similar, you know? Issues with similar staffing in hospital uh transfers? Because, or, or is that, is Amberwell higher than normal transfers? See, I think we need to see, we need to see both sides to make a decision.
So uh, to be clear, we, Amberwell would not be compared um against a mosaic. Against uh Saint Luke's or a KU, so that comparison data would have to be against other. Critical access hospitals in the region. And so that is data that I can pull for you as well.
So a couple of things, um, I would like to, to point out is first of all, to my fellow commissioners. Um, I did not arrange the meeting with EMS, EMS Director. Um, and assistant arranged the meeting and invited me to join them, which I very much appreciated being at the table. Cause many of the things that you highlighted in, in your takeaways is, are the things that we discussed that day. Um, so thank you for the charts as well, I have a question on, um, cause it seemed like, from what I heard, like. The, the biggest concern is the ability to truly take care of the critical ninety-minute window patients. And I'm not seeing how many of those are on here.
That is the data that he had asked for, so I can get that for you.
But I feel like that then will relate. But I feel like that then will relay back to us as county commissioners on how we plan our resources. And if we need, if the numbers justify a dedicated, you know, unit for that. But we, we can't make those decisions without knowing um the critical versus these are non-emergent. So I think that was one. Um, I know the helicopter switch, you know, has created a delay. Um, and you, you touched base on the, on the limiting. I can assure you from a succession planning standpoint, that our staff, um, our HR director, as well as our emergency medical director. Are in the know of everything happening and are succession planning. Um, we do active recruiting, you know, we do face the, the state shortages and the fact that hospitals can pay them more. But um, but we definitely um have plans in place on, on how to adapt to those, those challenges. Um, and as far as the nursing processes and protocols, is that something that you want us to develop? On our end, or you have those developed to protect your employees? Because at that meeting, we had talked about if we don't have a paramedic and you have to get there, if a nurse jumps on board to be that extra set of hands. You're concerned about the liability for, for your staff?
Correct.
Okay.
So the liability of once they get into the back of that ambulance, are they functioning as an extension of Atchison County EMS? And what protocols are they following and what guides that as far as what they can do? Are they functioning as an Amberwell employee? And should there be, you know, an accident or, or something happen while they are in that ambulance? What does that look like?
Okay.
They just wanna make sure that their licenses and their practice is going to be protected in the back of that ambulance.
Okay, and we can review that with the county counselor to make sure that.
Perfect.
Uh, we know what that looks like. Um, as far as the equipment issues, I know I've only been here four years. But um we have came leaps and bounds. Um, we have dedicated resources um to our equipment. We've updated things, got new pieces of equipment to help with that. Um, so I'll get with the director on what that looks like um to talk about if there's any additional needs. That we as the commission need to allocate funding for, um, because in that meeting, um, if you recall, it is a commission problem. All right, funding, a- all the things you're talking about come down to the resources that we give to our department heads to function. Um, so having these meetings is incredibly useful. And I appreciate you reaching out to have those. Because without us as commissioners, understanding the true community impact for you. I mean, you're only looking through your lens, right? You have Amberwell to take care of. Our EMS is running nine-one-one calls. I mean, they're running your transfers all over to the other side of Kansas City and putting somebody out, you know, for a three-hour turnaround. And if there's a car wreck or a shooting, or, you know, all the things that we've been seeing in um our community lately, like. It's, everybody is stretched incredibly thin, and I know you are at the hospital as well. So um I think just empathizing with one another and having these conversations. And I, I can assure you, our, our director is more than on top of, of the planning. And having the conversations with us about the challenges he sees um as well. So if there, yeah, I think that that for us as commissioners, having that truly critical number. Um, so that we know, I mean, because obviously when we're budgeting, it has to make sense, right? And I know that there's private um for-profit transfer services popping up around too. So if we have all the information to analyze, you know, together, we can find the solution that makes sense for Atchison County, I think. So.
One thing that I would say real quick, just on the emergent versus non-emergent transfers. I know there's cut and dry things like strokes, STEMI's, things like that. But there's also non-emergent that can turn emergent very quickly. So even though it's not a timed heart, timed brain, the longer they stay at our facility, becoming critically ill. Because of lack of transfer, that can, it kinda blurs the line a little bit. So like, like, let's say I have a strangulated bowel or something, I don't have a surgeon, it's seven hours for a transfer. And that's, I'm just making those numbers up. The longer they wait, the sicker they get. So that delay kinda, it's more, they receive better care the quicker they get there type of situation. So that's the one thing I would say on emergent versus non-emergent transfers. I know there's the obvious ones, but there's also the medical necessity ones too.
So, help me understand the relationship. And I, I guess until you, you kind of said that, I've never really asked our EMS director. But are those emergent situations coming into Amberwell or they're already at Amberwell?
No, they're coming in and it's increasing.
There, there are occasions where it's someone who has already been impatient that is experiencing a deterioration.
Okay.
Um, and but the major, the vast majority of these are coming in through our emergency department.
And were some of those from lack of staffing at the hospital? If you don't have that surgeon that can do that, so it makes then it puts the weight on the transport? I mean.
I mean, for a hospital the size of Atchison, we can't have all of the specialties, unfortunately. I would love to have, it would be so much easier to have every single specialty. But sometimes their skills are not there. You cannot have that specialty just because we don't have that many patients that require that.
And maybe cases, even if there was a surgeon on call, and we break that down as well. Is it a surgical case that had we had a surgeon on call, we would have done appendectomy? Gallbladder, yes, absolutely. That sits in one bucket. Versus um a complex uh open procedure. That is not something we would ever do at our hospital. Because it is beyond the skill set and the training of our surgeon. Um, or beyond the skill set and the training of the staff and the resources needed to support that. So I think it's a mixed.
But what about less uh critical staff? What about nursing? Do you have a limit of how many patients you can have with the staff, with the nurses that are available? So if you're short-staffed, you, you turn away patients?
Um, that has, that has happened. I'm not gonna say that it hasn't.
Then what happens to those patients? They, if you have incoming through uh ambulance, delivers them to you.
Yep.
And you're not able to treat them, but you recommend them to be treated somewhere.
Yes.
So then they would become, I mean, do you admit them until the window avail- is available for transport?
That is dependent on the situation. We typically will not admit them waiting for transport. And the reality of that is, once we admit a patient and give them a bed. The other hospitals now drop them off their priority list, and they will be the last patient accepted. So they end up staying much longer at a lower level of care required. So we will hold them in the emergency department. If it is a patient that we are not capable of caring for. We do not have the specialty staff required. They need to be admitted. They're not, you know, an emergent transfer. We hold them in the emergency department and care for them there. Until a bed or transportation is available.
And how long can that last?
It can last up to ten, twelve hours. I mean, during COVID, it would last for days.
I, I guess I know of a specific case where someone was brought in to your facility. I guess evaluated, recommended for transport to Mosaic. We couldn't handle the, our county EMS couldn't handle the transfer. So they were already diagnosed and recommended for transport, but then they were taken back to the nursing home, put in their bed. And with no care, I mean, so if they were recommended for transport to another facility. And then, but they were taken back to the facility because there wasn't an EMS or a transport available. Who does that fall?
That is, I would have to look into that case. That does not.
That doesn't make sense.
I.
But it happened.
And then the EMS picked him up from there and transported him to Mosaic?
No, the family got ahold of me. I pretty came personally involved.
Okay.
I questioned our EMS.
I would like to be able to review that case personally.
Okay.
Unless there was a conversation with the family about waiting, or they said we would like to go home.
Oh, no, because that's the family got ahold of me, specifically saying that they were basically turned away from the hospital. The, our ambulance service is busy. We couldn't do the transport right away. So this individual was taken back to the nursing home and the family got ahold of me. Cause it's like, they can't transport him on their own. What to do, to do. So I found out in the meantime, the call volume had went down, ambulances had came back. And I had the family draw, take, uh, call nine-one and take the individual, pick him back up. Then take him to Mosaic and where he spent over a week. So.
So that's, that's a very specific outlier that we would love to know about so that we can look into that. Because as you're saying, that as our medical director and as the nursing leaders. That is not a situation that we see as should have happened. So we needed the opportunity to do an investigation into that. Because from what you're saying at surface level, that is highly concerning to both of us. So I would just strongly encourage you, i- if you became aware of a situation like that, to please let us know. Because that is not a standard of care.
I would like to talk with, but I don't, who do I talk with?
You can talk with me directly and I engage whomever I need to engage in that conversation. Yes, but absolutely.
Well, and uh unfortunately, of course, when I got the call, it made it look like. That situation was due to the county staffing.
Gotcha.
And I think it goes much beyond that.
I, I would agree with that.
So, okay.
Yep, absolutely.
That just needs reviewed and to see kind of both sides of the situation.
Cause I know we've been uh apprised of the situation that we can't get there when we would like to. And that, that, and I was always assumed up until that point, that that person was being admitted or held at the hospital until. Because it's quite evident that the person needed help. So uh that's where the, the difference and why I became involved with the case.
And, and that, that typically is the process. If we have determined that this patient needs a higher level of care even than what we can provide, then it.
But I don't think it was that high of level of care we're talking about, an aged person here.
You two will get together and get, get those.
Yes, I'll be happy to follow up on that with you.
That would be great. Um, okay, so takeaways of today's meeting. First of all, thank you guys for coming and advocating on behalf of our EMS director. And, you know, just reiterating all the challenges he, he has given to the commission year after year. I think that's um very important to hear from, from you guys as our local hospital. Um, so takeaways, I think you guys, if you could, the, the truly critical numbers. I think that's the game changer for us as a board.
Yep.
Um, as far as equipment failures and such, we have that data. We know what we need to do. Um, our, on our end to allocate resources for that. Um, and then we will review um the liability of others um with our county counselor and, and what that looks like. Is there anything else? Do we wanna schedule a follow-up meeting um to, to kind of have a next steps? I always like to.
Campbell, you had requested some comparison data with other counties and critical access facilities. Is that something you still find beneficial?
I think so. I think it, it, it gives us an idea, uh, and it may tell us something about our community.
Okay.
You know, uh, uh.
Yeah.
And that may, that may be a factor that at this point in time. Uh, is somewhat out of our control, but it, it, it is something to look at, I think.
Okay.
This, the, the, the uh. Oh, I don't know the right word to say it. The structure of your, your community, the, uh, you know, where are we? And it would be nice to know uh the calls and how they break down each call, you know, uh. We know, we know that generally the heart patients have to go. I think we all, I think we all seen that, know that. Um, but there are others that probably typically go also because of the, the expertise is somewhere else. But the others, um, you know, I'm curious where they fall in. And that data will help us work with uh the director, work with EMS to figure this out.
So would you like for me to provide that data once it's gathered? Send it to you, Commissioner Quinn, or schedule a time to come back and present it here?
Why don't you send it to commissioners@?
Commissioners?
Yep, it's commissioners plural at A T C O K S dot org. And that will come to all three of us for us to um see the data and review it. And then we can then have a discussion on next steps of how we communicate forward, if, if that works for you guys.
Commissioners at?
A T.
Yeah.
A T.
Thank you.
K S dot org.
Thank you.
We should probably put some of our cards down here too. That'd be a good idea. Sorry, thank you. But yeah, anything else?
I appreciate the time.
Thank you guys so much.
I just want what's best for the community and if we can help and.
Yes, we all do.
And it has to be a part, thank you so much. It has to be a partnership for sure. So we just wanted to lend our support and just kind of share that perspective. So I appreciate your time.
Yes, no, absolutely. Thank you guys so much. Appreciate it.
And would you be able to write that patient's name down by any chance, so I can start a review if possible?
Yeah, please.
Thank you.
I think I've got a date here.
Oh, that will help you. I appreciate that. Uh, if you just have a name, I'll be able to weed it out.
I believe it's January.
All right, I will look into that a little bit further for you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
All right, so um we have the need for an executive session for ten minutes with attorney-client. So commissioners and um county counselor.
Just four of us?
Yeah.
You say it's attorney-client? Yes. Okay, my template has changed here since I'm in a new thing, so you may have to bear with me.
You're fine.
I will move that the Board of County Commissioners recess into executive session at eleven twenty-nine AM. A consultation with an attorney with a public body, which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship as a law. I K S A seventy-five dash four-three-one-nine B two. And that the purpose of the closed session is to protect the confidentiality of the discussion. And that the board come out of the executive session in ten minutes in the commission room of the courthouse basement. And those present will be the three commissioners and Pat Anderson, county council.
Okay, I will second. It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye. Aye, passes three to zero.
You'll hit pause on the surface to pause the recording. And then you'll just hit the little camera and the microphone on the TV screen.
Awesome, we are back in open session. Um, and at the end of our agenda. So I would look for a motion to adjourn into commission workshops.
So move.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye. Aye, passes three to zero.